Things I'll spotlight in my report tonight, um, not only
Okay, and these on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, congratulations to you for reigning the Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA for 2021. And congratulations to, to your parents also. And I'm, you know, fortunate we had to see each other, you know, across the screen. But, you know, we are very fortunate to have someone like you to give us this distinct and honor to LTHS. Again, congratulations. And like Dr. McBride said, you are free to stay or you're free to, you know, leave us. Okay?
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night and have a happy holiday.
Happy holidays. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Anise, on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, congratulations to you for reigning the Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA for 2021. And congratulations to, to your parents also. And I'm, you know, fortunate we had to see each other, you know, across the screen. But, you know, we are very fortunate to have someone like you to give us this distinct and honor to LTHS. Again, congratulations. And like Dr. McBride said, you are free to stay or you're free to, you know, leave us. Okay?
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night and have a happy holiday.
Happy holidays. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Anise, on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, congratulations to you for reigning the Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA for 2021.
And congratulations to, to your parents also. And I'm, you know, fortunate we had to see each other, you know, across the screen. But, you know, we are very fortunate to have someone like you to give us this distinct and honor to LTHS. Again, congratulations. And like Dr. McBride said, you are free to stay or you're free to, you know, leave us. Okay?
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night and have a happy holiday.
Happy holidays. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Anise, on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, congratulations to you for reigning the Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA for 2021. Good evening, everyone. Tonight we have a special board resolution in honor of Senior Anise Puckett, who just led the pledge of allegiance for us. So I'd like to welcome Anise here this evening as well as her mother Monique and her father Eric. The board resolution reads, "This resolution is recognizing Anise Puckett for receiving the title of reigning Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA 2021, whereas Anise Puckett, a current senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved the honor of becoming the reigning Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA 2021, and whereas Anise Puckett has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 21st day of December 2020. Congratulations, Anise."
Thank you.
Okay, Anise, on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, congratulations to you for reigning the Miss Black Illinois Talented Teen USA for 2021. And congratulations to, to your parents also. And I'm, you know, fortunate we had to see each other, you know, across the screen. But, you know, we are very fortunate to have someone like you to give us this distinct and honor to LTHS. Again, congratulations. And like Dr. McBride said, you are free to stay or you're free to, you know, leave us. Okay?
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night and have a happy holiday.
Happy holidays. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a student report, student government?
Hello, everybody. Um, I have nothing to report, but I didn't want to pass up the opportunity, um, to thank everybody. So on behalf of the membership, I'd like to thank you for your support during this very interesting 2020 school year. Um, and I would also like to wish you a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the ISB Governing Board Report. Um, Ms. Luann Johnson, do you have anything to report?
Uh, nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next, all right, thank you. Next we have our Foundation Board Report, and that would be Mr. Dick Ives.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Bob, is Mike Frizzalone on this call? Did he log in?
Uh, he, he did not. Um, and that might be my bad, so we might just move, move forward. So I might have missed him on the, the login there on the group, so my apologies.
Okay, the, the reason I ask is, uh, Mike Frizzalone being the board, uh, Foundation President was going to have the pleasure of introducing, uh, who I believe is on the call, our new Executive Director, Kate Dean. Are you out there, Kate?
Yes, I am. Hi.
Hi. There, there she is. No, after a, uh, very successful and, uh, focused search, there were many leading candidates, but we're very excited that, uh, Kate accepted our offer and, uh, subject to board approval should be starting very shortly. Uh, so we're very excited about it. So Kate, I haven't had a chance to congratulate since I met you during the interview, uh, but welcome. Uh, you'll, you'll do great things, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. I'm excited, very excited to be a part of LTHS and the foundation.
And Kate, do you want to share a few things, you know, just a few things with board members that you're, you're thinking that you've talked with Mr. Ives and Janine Wheeler and myself? Just a, you know, no prepared speech required, but, you know, anything on your mind not putting you too much on the spot?
Sure. Um, like I said before, I'm very excited to be part of LTHS and the foundation. Um, I worked with nonprofit organizations for the past 12 years, and the last four years I worked in marketing. So I'm excited to bring all of my skills together and help build a bridge between LTHS and the community. Um, and I'm very excited to meet everyone in person eventually, hopefully, and, uh, and working with everybody. And, um, we're gonna do things, uh, slow and steady to get things done and organized, so I'm excited.
We're excited to have you, I'm sure.
Terrific. And like, uh, Dick mentioned, Kate has a background, uh, not only in marketing, but also in graphic design, web design, uh, technology. She came very highly, you know, recommended from her references, so we're very excited that you're on board. Um, I did want to share with board members, one board member asked me just to remind the board, and I did put it in the agenda, but I'll kind of, I'll, I'll share it. The, the structure, uh, the agreement that board members voted on in September relative to Kate's position and the structure with the foundation. So board members might remember that upfront, um, as we onboard Kate and get her set up with all the equipment that she needed, the foundation would reimburse, uh, the LTHS Board of Education $3,500 for any startup costs. The very first two years of Kate's employment, Kate will start if approved this evening, we believe that'll happen. Um, she'll start, uh, in the new year, and in the first two years of her employment, uh, the LTHS Board of Education will cover the costs, um, entirely. In year three, the foundation will reimburse LTHS for 15% of Kate's position. In year four, 25% uh, will be reimbursed, uh, for Kate's position. In year five, the foundation will come up to reimbursing the LTHS Board of Education 50% of Kate's total compensation. And then in year six, uh, the position will be reevaluated if there will be any, um, cost coverage by the Foundation Board, uh, beyond 50%. So just, I have that in the, in this report and just wanted to remind board members of what was voted on in September at the September 21st Board of Education meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and congratulations, uh, Kate, for joining.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on, then we have our legislative report. Dr. McBride?
Well, it is very busy in the legislature. Um, uh, Scope has informed us that the busiest, most busy, um, facet of the legislature is deciding, uh, what's happening with the Speaker of the House, but I'm, that's, that doesn't really concern us, uh, in the role, in the role that, that we have. But I guess that is very, uh, hotly contested down in Springfield. Couple of things, probably most important to us is, uh, how the Illinois Department of Public Health is trying to make its way through quarantine procedures. Uh, the Center for Disease Control early in December revised its guidelines primarily for people who are exposed to COVID, which would be a person who has a close contact with someone who is infected by COVID-19. Presently, uh, or previously, I should say, we were required to quarantine that person for 14 days. Uh, the CDC has made their revision that there are certain cases in which a person who's been exposed could be quarantined for seven days or 10 days. And the state of Illinois has been trying to decide what, what it will do. Presently where it's at is it is applying that CDC definition for seven days to adults only, uh, not to youth. Uh, youth who are exposed, uh, districts, as the IDPH has said, it's available for us, uh, for 10 days. So seven days for adults, 10 days for adults, and then 14 days in cases where someone is positive with COVID or has COVID-like symptoms. So we are seeing our way through that, that has a significant impact on our district and our in-person learning model. Because what really crippled us in terms of in-person learning, uh, was the quarantine process. Because at one, by November 10th, with the post-Halloween surge in, uh, COVID-19, we really came to almost a point where 20% of our students could not attend in-person school. Uh, and that was on a 14-day quarantine. So we have navigated very successfully in partnership with our union. We've put safety at the very top, and great story for our district, when we were in person, we kept disease lows low on campus. We only have one case of person-to-person transmission. Um, there were people who did get COVID, but when, uh, Tony Candari and Carly Barone did a great job contact tracing, all of that was transmitted off-campus. So that goal that we had in August of putting safety as our top priority, I really feel we, we made that this semester. But the one thing that we could not get around was the quarantine process. So I hope by the time that we return to in-person learning on January 20th, we have some real clarity there. Um, I suspect I would report to the board that that clarity is going to have to come from us. Um, I believe that the final position of the, um, IDPH will be that 14 days is safest. 10 is available for our use, and most of the area, um, districts around us are going to that. And seven is, um, used only for adults. Uh, so stay tuned. Uh, vaccination, vaccination has started in Illinois on December 15th. A health worker at Loretto Hospital, uh, received the first Illinois vaccination. Uh, we are still waiting for a final definition of where educators will be. Uh, healthcare workers, nursing home, uh, clients are, are receiving vaccinations first. We're being told that it could start as early as mid-January, and the target right now is mid-March where educators are, are vaccinated. So we'll have to see, there have been some logistical issues, um, transport supply, uh, and storage issues with, with both the Moderna and, uh, Pfizer Biotech, um, two-dose vaccination. Athletics, uh, we get a lot of questions from our community about athletics right now. Um, it's a situation where the IHSA and the, um, state don't seem to be talking to each other. Frustrating for us legislatively, one of the most successful things our district has done is provide athletics for our students. Uh, we did so, much to credit Mike Dwyer, Athletic Director, in the summer. We had a full season in the fall, including parent spectators, uh, without transmission, without disease. Uh, our, um, athletic conference, the Southwest Suburban Conference, has submitted a plan to the state where we are asking for restart of athletics on January 18th, 2021. And we're asking for basketball to be reclassified as a medium-risk sport rather than a high-risk sport. As a high-risk sport, um, it's, it's potential for even being played this year is, is very limited. Uh, so that's what's happening. State finances, quite a bit going on with state finances, um, a lot of regrouping in light of the failed Fair Tax Constitutional Amendment. Um, and then also, uh, the, what was approved just recently, the most recent bailout that was approved at the congressional federal level did not include relief for states. Significant for Illinois because Illinois has a $5 billion loan from the federal government. With a new administration coming in, we'll see where that goes. This will probably, is, has precipitated cuts, and the first round of cuts have been made already with the governor last week announcing, uh, $711 million in cuts to state programs, facilities. Uh, and we'll see probably a cut, uh, in some funding programs, possibly on the horizon in 2022 where evidence-based funding will be cut. Uh, so that is going on in the wake of the Fair Tax, um, failing. Questions, you know, anything about legislation in Springfield? Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McBride. Okay, next we'll go on to notices and communications, uh, Dr. Veronica Shaw.
So we received a note from Dick Ives, and Dick, if you want to chime in, feel free, to the LTHS staff, administration, and board members. It said, "I cannot thank you enough for the support and encouragement that I've received up to and since my mother's recent passing. My mother was an educator for over 40 years, and it is her support and upbringing that makes the education of all students to the forefront and the reason I proudly serve on the LTHS Board. Many times when I needed a pick-me-up, you were there, and so it is so appreciated. The flowers were gorgeous, and my family also thanks you." And that is all.
All right. Thank you. Okay, and you can see then you have some of those, um, Freedom of Information requests that are there, and I believe they've all been, um, fulfilled. All right, um, next we'll have, let's see, the public comments. Okay, "A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The Board President will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information which will be used for any necessary board follow-up." And Dr. McBride, there is none?
Uh, there is none this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, then moving on, um, approval, we're going into the approval items. I just need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 16, 2020. So move.
I'll second it.
All right. All right, who made that motion?
Shaw.
Veronica made it. I seconded it.
So who, who made the motion? I'm sorry?
Shaw.
Okay, and.
Sorry.
Luann does. Okay, all right, so, that, that's okay. So Dr. Shaw made the motion, and Mr. Luann Dowski seconded. All right, roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Luann Dowski?
Yes.
Johnson? Luann Johnson? I think she left, or no, she's still there. I think she's still in the, she needs to unmute. Thumbs up or thumbs down? Need a voice?
Yeah, Mrs. Johnson, if you just hit your spacebar, it should unmute you, just the spacebar on the keyboard. Looks like we lost Mrs. Johnson. Um, so we might just have to move forward with the roll call. Oh, she's back. So Luann, you're, you are still muted, and, oh, there you go. You're back.
There you go.
I couldn't get the, I couldn't get it to unmute, but anyway.
Okay. Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next we'll have the approval of the Treasures Report for November 2020. Just need a motion for that.
So move it, Dick.
Second, Mike Travis.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Travis to approve the Treasures Report for November 2020. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Luann Dowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez, Vickers?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on then to our superintendent update. Dr. McBride?
Hey, terrific. Thanks, Mrs. Lopez Caniva. Probably the most important thing for us, uh, to consider in this superintendent update, and I'll stop, you know, after a few words, uh, for board members to weigh in, is our plan for second semester. What we've tried to do is a combination of things. We've tried to take the, um, return-to-school transition plan that we created over the summer that the board saw in July in a draft and then approved in, um, in August, and stay true to the principles and the tools that the board approved. Uh, the principles of that were a high commitment to safety. The principles of that were a high commitment to safety first and foremost, equity for students and teachers to access each other, keeping learning going through this very unusual and longer than we ever thought pandemic, maintaining flexibility. And as a board, you've done an outstanding job. I think our staff is so grateful that you have been flexible. I would commend you on your wisdom, on being flexible with employees, with situations, and then finally communicating. We have endeavored to communicate with you and regularly communicate with our parents and with our staff and really with students as well, so that everyone knows, even though most of that communication is electronic, everyone has access to our plants, our plans, excuse me, and we have transparency as well. We have done also a number of surveying. I detailed in my report the number of times that we have surveyed staff, students, and parents. Each of those have had a very high yield with almost 400 members of our staff weighing in on a thought exchange, almost 600 members of the public weighing in on a thought exchange, holding town halls, both with parents and in-person listening sessions with our staff. And then we had the Kids Matter Stress Survey with 3,413 students participating in that. And then a month later, just to kind of check that survey, after a month of in-person learning, we resurveyed students using Thought Exchange, and over 1,000 students participated in that. Here's what we learned. We learned some very valuable lessons, and I also think we learned very valuable lessons from our staff and our partnership with our union and just the classroom teacher experience from the eyes also of deans and school counselors. We learned a couple of things. There is a broad understanding among people that there will be interruptions. We might have state action. We had that right at the beginning of the year. There might be interruptions due to quarantine. As I mentioned, November 10th, we had almost 20% of our student body off-campus and excluded from coming on-campus. Some of the interruptions, we thought, outbreaks of disease, gosh, you know, our staff, people like Tony Candari, Carly Maroney, Bill Thompson and his staff, the efforts of teachers, our building administrators, really kept us safe from disease. We never had that kind of large outbreak that people thought would happen in schools. But we learned when those interruptions are unpredictable, it is very stressful. Even though we've asked people to be flexible, when those interruptions come, even if we're forecasting them, those pivots from one mode to another are very difficult, very challenging for students, our staff, and for parents. We also learned that both psychologically and logistically, a consistency in a plan, a consistency of expectation, what can I expect moving forward, is important both psychologically to people, and it's important to people just from a logistical point of view, just from the point of view, how do I plan my classes? What do I know is coming up? How do I pace my curriculum? As a student, what should I expect? As a parent, how do I do my family calendar and know when my students might be home, when I need to get my students to the bus stop? So very important. Interruptions, consistency. Two other things we learned is that students in this pandemic world, whether we're in-person or whether we're remote, they need assistance. These are students who have historically struggled with school. These are students who are some of our best students. Why? Because in remote or in-person, we do not have five-day-a-week daily contact with each other. We have to communicate in a robust way outside of the classroom, through email, through Google Classroom, through Infinite Campus. It's more and more difficult to communicate. And so assistance is important and to embed in the school day, a time when teachers can access students, students can access their teachers, very important interruptions, consistency, and student assistance. And then finally, we have learned that in-person learning and remote learning can form a pair. They can work together to benefit each other. In-person has the obvious benefit of students are in the building, they're connecting with teachers, they're having the routines, the socialization, addressing some of the social, emotional, and mental health issues that students are experiencing. But it's a challenge, in-person is a challenge. It is challenging to split our students in half, to bus our students here safely, to be a student who is wearing a mask all day. Remote learning has some real advantages. Remote learning keeps people safe, especially if they're on quarantine. Remote learning lets a teacher bring her or his whole class together. Remote learning allows for that kind of consistency of connection, but the drawback is isolation, increased electronic activity, and some challenges that students have with engagement. So we learned that these two compare together. So we know interruptions can come, a consistent plan really helps, and personal assistance is necessary, and if we compare these two tools together, it would really be helpful to have these two work in tandem, especially with the issue of quarantine. So as board members know, what we presented to our staff and what we presented to our parents is the first 10 weeks of the school day is in essence, a calendar that puts two weeks, starts the semester with two weeks in remote, shifts to two and a half weeks of in-person learning, shifts to two weeks of remote learning, two weeks of in-person learning, two weeks of remote learning. Tried to lay out a calendar that provides those four priorities. We hope that it can be insulated from the interruptions that we've seen in this pandemic. We hope it provides something consistent, so people know when we'll make shifts. We know that the bell schedules we'll use daily, we'll provide afternoon assistance time for students, and we want to pair in-person and remote learning to really work as one. So let me just stop there and really take board member questions. That's a lot to take in, but I think it's important to hear your feedback and your questions.
Well, Dr. McBride, this is Lisa Bickus. I have, I spent some time looking at the Kids Matter Stress Survey just about two hours ago. I was fascinated that all four grades came up pretty close to the same stressors. So I'm curious, are we going to take this to the next level since that survey was completed or thought out by the company that we utilized in 2017? And we have different stressors from remote learning to, you know, going back into school. I'm just curious what we're going to do with this, because the stressors are too much homework, getting good grades, and overscheduled. So I'm just curious what we are going to do with that going forward.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mrs. Bickus. So a few things. One is, right in this plan, we have some answers. As you noted, in terms of school stress, students said that their personal stress they put on themselves, and then societal stress are the two other stressors. But in terms of school stress, students reported homework, and students also reported that only, that 66% of our students said that if they were struggling, they would not reach out to anybody. They wouldn't even reach out to a friend to say, "I'm struggling." That oftentimes comes from the experience that students have, where they think they're the only ones struggling. Nobody must be as, you know, incapable as they are, right? They put themselves on that. So in this structure, number one, we don't want to create a situation like we had first semester where we literally cut students off from the classroom because of the quarantine. So we're putting that in place where we maintain a consistency of access. The second thing is those afternoon assistants, the time between 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock, we're really putting an accent on that, as you might have seen from the video that we sent out. We are going to use, and Lori Christopher, we'll talk a little bit later, something called Responsive Schedular. We know that we have to reach out to a student who needs some assistance to say, "Hey, we need to see you. We can't wait for a student to make an appointment with us. Teenagers are just not going to do that." So we have to reach out, and one of our plans is to put a real accent on that time between 1:00 and 3:00, where you can work one-on-one with your teacher. So we know that that student assistance piece is important. The other thing that we're going to do is we're really going to start digging deep into social-emotional learning at our institute day in January, and take that Kids Matter survey and really break it apart. And I think if you look at the Thought Exchange survey a month later, what's happening is our students are being very challenged in terms of their executive functioning. And in this world, I mean, how many of you as adults feel fatigued by the volume of email, the volume of calendar invites that you have to keep on top of? And now just imagine being a 15- or 18-year-old student and trying to manage all of that. And if we can be more deliberate as a school district at helping students stay organized, we're going to really take a look at something called CASL, which is an organization here in Chicago that really is a coalition dedicated to social-emotional learning. So embedding in the work that we do, how can we take care of helping students be organized? So I hope that helps kind of roll out.
Yeah, thank you, it does, thank you.
And I'd be remiss, Lisa, if I didn't. A lot of, the anchor of this has really been our guidance department, Grant Furkelak, our social workers, and school counselors, and our physical education department. One thing I'm very proud of is across Chicagoland, I've talked to superintendents who have a 30% to 50% failure rate in physical education. Ours is incredibly low, because I think of what they've done with the Resilient Youth Program. So kudos to those two departments.
Can say to the board, take some time and watch that survey, Stress, the Kids Matter Stress Survey video. It was very good, it was eye-opening, but it also gives you some of the stress that our young adults are going through and that our teachers and our administration need to deal with over the next 18 months, I think. But it was very good.
Okay, thank you.
Just if there are some questions, I just want to make some space for any questions about, you know, moving forward. I had just a few other pieces in my report.
Dr. McBride, I think Luann had a question.
Yeah, Mrs. Johnson, did you have a question?
I wanted to make a statement. I was actually on that presentation, and I think a lot of the parents were enlightened as to what was going on with their kids. So I think it was a great effort that we did present this to the parents. So that's all I want to say, because they had a lot of questions, and a lot of the comments that came across, came across as being very enlightening to what, you know, we as parents always think, one thing's wrong with our kids, and really there's other things also going on with them. So that was my comments.
I agree, I agree. A few other things, just two commitments we have in the second semester are really to put an accent on student assistance. We have learned so much. If you look at that video that we sent out about student assistance, so many people, Lori Christopher, Matt Dusterhoff, Jen Webry, Grant Furkelak, our principals and building administrators, our deans and guidance counselors, really wrapped their hands around students. And I think you directly see that in the, literally here at the end, the drop in our failure rate. Our teachers, who really took advantage of some of our most challenged, disengaged students. It was very charming to see some of our teachers show up, and these were students who hadn't shown up really all semester, and saying, "Hello, I am so glad to see you again. Let's get back in the game." And we owe a lot to Dave Niedisball, Stephanie Croy, Bill Thompson with Transportation and with Facilities, all of that, bringing in so many students to Central and East at the end couldn't have helped, you know, couldn't have happened without their help. And rather than reacting at the end of the semester, we hope to put that at the forefront at the beginning of the semester. And then also improving our at-home learning. I mean, it's really amazing. Last year, at this time, Lori Christopher put a small committee together of individuals, about eight to 10 teachers, looking at blended learning, using technology the way we're using it today. And we said, "Well, that's about where people are. That's about how many people are ready." Now we have 274 educators who could probably, who could teach any online class. That's a sea change, it's amazing. But we know that when students are at home, especially within-person learning, we can make improvements to the at-person, at-home learning they receive, so we have a commitment to that. Mrs. Johnson already mentioned the Kids Matter Stress Survey, that was a great partnership with a non-for-profit. We received so much from that. Thank you to Michael Luann Dowsky, and Michael Travis, and Mrs. Johnson for joining that town hall. And as was mentioned earlier, students said that they're just feeling overwhelmed with homework and assignments. We think that's helping them stay organized, stay on top of all of that, and seeking assistance. We were really surprised when 66% of our students said they wouldn't even seek out a friend to say, "I'm struggling in school." We also had some real positives in there. For parents out there, generally in this survey nationally, students say that parents are their greatest source of pressure. Our students said that personal pressure, pressure they put on themselves, is their greatest source of home pressure. Also, they double-checked, triple-checked, because usually in a high sample size, substance abuse is usually much higher than 6% of your students reporting substance abuse. It's the lowest that they've seen reported in this survey. And yes, it is self-reported, but the researchers really felt that that was significant, that it was so low, so that's a good thing. Couple of other things, our Student Equity Action Committee had a great meeting on November 20th in Police Youth Forum, and we're going to continue that on with three other meetings. Our youth talking to the police outside of any kind of confrontation situation, getting pulled over for a speeding ticket or being asked to leave Sonic, to try to understand the lives of police, but also the police understanding youth. And it was very moving and had a lot of depth to it. Our Parent Equity Action Committee, I want to thank Dr. Green, and I want to thank Dr. Green for bringing together some of the folks, and Mrs. Johnson, who attended this meeting last week as well. Our Parent Equity Action Committee is really looking at our safety and security and how we express that in our hallways, how we can do that with dignity and equity and inclusiveness, especially understanding the students that are coming into our buildings. And then finally, student performance, that's really where it's all at. The state of Illinois, given the pandemic, did not include in our school report card this year our SAT or really any academic information, but I did provide the board how our students, our seniors, class of 2021, did in, on the SAT in October. A slight dip, but I think it's so significant that it wasn't a cataclysmic dip as many people expected at their schools. Our students performed just a little lower as their average, but not a huge dip. Very impressed, I sent you a graphic, our failure rate right now is at about 4% here as we ended the semester. It improved by about five percentage points lower, and our pass rate is 95% here at the end of the semester. So I think we really have to reflect on what has gone well in this very challenging semester for everyone. Also, you know, kudos to Jen Webry and our staff in Park, which is our credit recovery. Mrs. Johnson, our member in May, we had quite a conversation in a board meeting about our 13 students who did not graduate. And I really appreciate this Board of Education, because rather than adopting a stance that says, "Well, 13, that's not too bad," you know, some students don't fail, you ask very probing questions, and you've established a program like Park to work with those students to get their high school graduation. We had seven who graduated, they are now completed. So that non-graduates from LTHS is down to six and still working with them. So that's a real tribute, both a lower failure rate and Park, just a real tribute to our staff and to our teachers and what they're all about. And that's my report for this evening, unless there are board member questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. McBride. Okay, and if you have any questions after reading that report, you can always call them, right?
You know my cell phone.
All right, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda items from number two to number five, I just need a motion for that.
So moved Shaw.
And I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caneva to approve the consent agenda items, number two to five. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, all right, roll call.
Bickus?
Lisa Bickus?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Luann Dowsky?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, then, moving on to the action consideration items, we'll have first the approval of the Will County Transportation Consortium Intergovernmental Agreement.
I think this is. I think this is, the next three items are all Stephanie Kroy, Stephanie Kroy, Stephanie Kroy. So Mrs. Kroy, you want to walk us through it?
Sure. The first item is a, um, intergovernmental agreement, um, that is on a two-year cycle between us and a number of other school districts to get better pricing in, um, the mandatory testing we do for our bus drivers. So it expires at the end of this month, and this is up for renewal. There's really no changes. The board sees, um, so, uh, Juliette High School is, um, they function kind of as the administrator for this cooperative agreement. So they do process a bid to make sure that we're still getting good pricing as a group. And, um, information on the entities that participated in the bid are also attached. So that's, that's what's being recommended for approval. Again, it has worked out well for us in the past. So, uh, does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Dr. McBride, do they need to vote separately on each one before I talk about each one? Or do you want me to just talk about them all and then let them go through and vote? What do you want me to do?
They need to vote separately on each one of those. So, thank you.
Okay, okay. Just need a motion then for this one.
Motion.
Second Dick.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Michael Travis and seconded by Mr. Dick Ives. All right, and hearing no questions, there will be a roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, then, moving on for the approval of the resolution levy in taxes for the tax year twenty twenty.
Okay, uh, the tax levy information that you see here is the exact same as you saw for the tentative levy you used for, that, that the board approved in November for the tentative levy. Um, I've received no new information to suggest that I make any changes to it. So, um, the pieces of information you have attached here are the resolution that'll need to be filed for the tax levy, as well as the certificate, certificate of compliance with the truth in taxation. So because our levy was not greater than the recommended levy for the board to approve is not greater than a hundred and five percent of the previous tax year extension, we did not have to have a hearing at the beginning of this meeting. And the certificate is explaining that, that we've complied with that law. Um, and then the last piece attached is the certificate of levy from the Illinois State Board of Education, Board of Education. Again, to remind board members, this tax levy, it, it was computed based on the expenditures as they were developed in the budget to try and support those expenditures. If the board has any questions about it, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? All right. Then I just need a motion.
So moved Shaw.
Seconded.
It's been approved. It's been early to talk about the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two prom. But, um, being a downtown venue, um, we, we try to get this in as soon as we can to make, we reserve our spot. So, um, the contract presented here for MSI, um, the, it promised for twenty twenty-two is scheduled for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And this contract is slightly different than previous contracts because previous contracts with MSI detailed out some, some more fixed costs and only had the food and beverage items, for the most part, as per person. This contract is moving completely to everything's a per person. So they've, they've kind of removed most of the fixed costs. And what that means to, to a district as large as Lockport is, um, we typically would only be required in a contract to have, I think it's a seven hundred dollar or seven hundred person, like, um, minimum that, that it's based on. And we've always far exceeded that, at least historically. Um, and then what has happened then is we've gotten some economies of scale with that cost because the fixed items are now divided over more people, making the per person cost less and therefore being able to keep our, our prom ticket price lower. So the way that this contract is, uh, switching, we're going to have to raise costs just to cover the, the MSI contract. And that would not include, um, the small, very small additional costs that we have, which are the, the, um, the DJ through Boom, and the prom is much, much smaller than the home, the homecoming and TWRP costs for Boom. Um, and then as well as favors and, um, some decorations, um, and things like that. And, um, talking to, uh, Mr. Lesnar, um, we do, our sponsors do keep the favor cost pretty low because they know that the bulk of the ticket cost needs to go to MSI, our ticket price needs to go to MSI. So, um, what the, what the board is being asked to approve here is the contract with MSI, not necessarily the price for the ticket for twenty twenty-two prom. Um, and again, this would only be for the twenty twenty-two prom that we're talking about raising it, not for twenty twenty-one. Okay? Um, because the twenty twenty-one prom ticket price is based on a contract that the board has approved previously. The recommend, you know, so the, I've stated in here, the, um, the minimum ticket price would need to increase to at least a hundred and thirty-five dollars per person in order to account for this contract, as well as the, um, additional costs. Again, working with Mr. Lesnar, who, um, is a, um, I believe he is currently president of the, um, Activities Director Association. He, speaking with him, I wanted to know, okay, where would that put us with other, you know, school districts? And he said that anyone with a downtown venue, we are still low, even if we raise the ticket price to a hundred and thirty-five because one fifty is kind of a, you're downtown, it's one fifty. So, um, all that being said, the recommendation here is to approve the contract with MSI and the whole contract is paid for by ticket prices. Does anybody have any questions on this change in the way the contract is written? Or, or what it may result in, in, um, an increase in ticket price? So what my plan would be is to, and, and this is also a slight change. I've never included the prom ticket cost on our schedule of school fees that the board has presented for approval in January. But I think that at this time, with a potential increase, recommending that along with the full schedule of fees and keeping it all in one place, I think is the best place to do it so that they're separated and the school fee, um, schedule is include, just includes that as another cost to a potential student or parent. And this would just be the contract approval. They're not really coupled in this action item.
Stephanie, I have a question. If you, um, since you're the numbers person. So given what we've got, what we went through last year with prom, what we potentially could go through this year with prom in twenty twenty-two, depending on, you know, whatever happens in the world. Say we don't get the number of students to go to prom due to apprehension for attending a large gathering. What would that do to prom ticket prices? Increase it? Or would we be able to break the contract?
I would have to ask them that question. We've not run into that. And I, I'm talking to Brian Lesnar, uh, you know, the two of us don't really, wouldn't really expect that because, and here's why. Because, um, even with what was going on last spring, we had, like, we tried to sell prom tickets and we did, and we were actually amazed at how many people actually went and bought them, even in the middle of what we were in last year. Now, we ultimately had to refund all of those, but it was, it was a lot more than we expected in that situation. So I wouldn't expect a couple of years out that, I would, I would expect that same response, that people are still going to want to go. Okay. I mean, we can ask that question of MSI to make sure, I mean, if they're charging us per person, I'd have to double-check the, the language of the, whether it's truly a guarantee or whether the estimate is just based on that. I don't recall the exact language of it.
So Steph, I'm, I'm reading number nine, the cancellation policy. And it says, unless specifically provided herein and under no circumstances will the deposit be paid by the customer, be refunded to the customer. So I, I think we're out the, I think we're out the deposit, no matter what. I think, so through the pandemic, a lot of my experiences is contracts like this have been changed to protect, protect what used to be kind of a gentleman's agreement. I think that is gone. I think we will lose the refund. So just, just-
We didn't for the, for the last spring, but-
Right. I know. But what I'm saying is because of the pandemic and just think of all the wedding cancellations and all of those things that were going on. I think they've put new clauses and new contracts, the reason why the new contract is up. I think we will lose the deposit, so-
If we have to cancel.
If we have to cancel, yeah, I do. And then the other thing is, is I am concerned that, um, my thought is I am concerned that we are going out to Chicago and they say the vaccine isn't going to be ready for eighteen months for people like you and I. Again, so are they going to require our students to all be vaccinated before they attend an event? You know, all of these things are unknowns and are we going to have seven hundred students? So just, so those are all just thoughts. And my question would be, is do we have to approve this right now? Can our attorney look at this contract, um, a little bit more and put some clauses in here for us instead? I just thought, just a thought.
Yeah, that, that is, that's exactly what we did with last year's contract and this year's contract is we put some force majeure language in there that in essence, which was beneficial to Museum of Science and Industry as well, because they could fall, you know, they could turn to us and say, we cannot, because of a regulation that Chicago, uh, sets, we can't provide service for you. And so they were amenable to that, uh, the last time around, we certainly could look at that. And see if there's some language that we could put in there that would allow for some of those things we just don't know in the future.
There actually is a force majeure-
There's a force majeure-
In there.
In there that supersedes the, um, that would supersede the, the previous language before it.
Correct. If for any reason beyond its control, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, and that language is in there and, you know, defines beyond its control where, you know, in essence, the force majeure clause is really getting at things that we neither can control nor Museum of Science and Industry can control. You know, beyond, you know, regulations, immunizations, uh, things like that. So it's really designed, um, for that, that circumstance, that situation. And the force majeure language that we came up with was working with Todd Hayden last year to, to put that in there because of the capricious nature of the pandemic.
And the, you know, the, the potential of losing a, a deposit is exactly why we would do everything we could to reschedule, like we tried to this year. So, um, hopefully that far out, we wouldn't be in that same situation where we're forced to cancel, but maybe just potential to move.
I know this is about Stephanie, this is about the, um, MSI contract, but, and you mentioned Boom in here, because of the pandemic, and maybe this could be a future topic. You know, we did that, uh, contract with them. We paid that money upfront for so many years out. Did we lose any money on that?
The only thing we lost is a small deposit with the prom from last spring. That's the only thing we've lost with Boom. Actually, um, uh, Mr. Lesnar and I are in communication with them right now, trying to determine what to do with that, um, the next, right now, um, TWRP is a question. So, um, and then, um, we, at this, of this time, we're planning on, we tried to move homecoming to, um, the, with, along with the football season. So that's, we're, we're working with Boom right now to make sure all that stuff transfers instead of, um, losing, right? So that we transfer them to future dances as opposed to losing, I guess, is my point. That's what we're working with Boom to be able to do.
Okay, I know we relaxed and soon we signed that contract, but I just want to make sure.
Okay, okay. All right. So I don't think that there, I mean, there isn't a necessity to approve this right now, but, um, we do risk losing the date if it's already taken. So if we don't approve it right now, and it's a month later, which the January meeting is late, it's like the twenty-something, we could lose the date. So. Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions? I'm sorry, Dr. McBride, go ahead.
Uh, no, not at all. That's, that's the most important question is if others, you know, have thoughts. I, I would suggest moving forward. I know our building principals would get concerned. The date is picked. My, I'm, you know, guessing Dr. Green and Dr. Green with a thought in mind, you know, that it's somewhat separated from, uh, the end of the school year because a prom that comes closer and closer to graduation can sometimes not bring out the best in, in, in people. And the force majeure language, really, you as a board helped us craft that last year, and it's the same language. You know, in essence, it says extraordinary. It actually helped the Museum of Science and Industry last year because when we rescheduled to July, they had to cancel on us. And so they had it out because of that, because it was beyond their control. The city of Chicago told them they couldn't operate events. So they have a precedent of using the language that we actually added, uh, to the contract to give everybody an out if there's something unusual related to the, the pandemic. So I think that helps as well. So I would add that to your decision whether to table this or recommend it. I obviously would ask you to, uh, move forward with it, um, so that we could secure that date. And as Stephanie said, we're a little closer to sharing upfront what those costs, you know, would be. A hundred and twenty dollars per bid is well within what you would see in the Chicagoland area. And especially well within, um, you know, apparently porters really like going downtown. And if you want to go downtown, you sometimes have to pay downtown prices. You know, obviously, if we kept business in, uh, the six, four, four, one, or another zip code, it might be, uh, different. But what I understand historically is people really appreciate that location and almost see it as a tradition.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski, and I can second that. For Lopez Caneva. Are there any further questions or concerns on this? Okay, all right, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Dr. McBride, for, for that insight on that one, on that contract. Okay, next, we'll go on to the policy consideration. And from what I understand, there is none.
We, uh, there is a new press, but we are giving the board a break this month. None of the policies are emergency or something. There, there are really some policies that impact Mrs. Cristofaro and Mrs. Kroy. And we're very close to compliance, so nothing, no major changes. We'll bring those to you next month.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, moving on to public comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information will be, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. I believe there is none.
You are correct, Mrs. Lopez Caneva. There are no public comments that were emailed in. Well, just to remind the board, I failed last time. Our, our protocol is, uh, under the, this Revised Open Meetings Act is that individuals have to email, uh, by six PM. And then usually you get me doing a dramatic reading of those, those emails, but we did not receive any, uh, relative to this board meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then, moving on to the information report on the principal's report.
All right, good evening, everyone. As we start off, you know, John and I really want to say how proud we are. We're very proud of our staff and our district for the relentless efforts to help our kids be successful this first semester. I mean, our staff really came up with innovative ways to assist kids and connect during these crazy times. I mean, it truly is commendable. And as you see in this report, um, you know, it's, it's kind of a short report, but in, as far as athletics, you know, the key again was making connections with kids, trying to get them to stay engaged. So Eltown actually met and is looking at ways to continue to have, uh, peer interaction. And actually, some of our coaches- And actually, some of our coaches had some small groups, individuals in on campus to do some training. And then the, um, big announcement from I just say though is on badminton, badminton was a spring sport. And they have actually moved it to the winter season pending hopefully an end of January start. Um, and as far as activities, all of our clubs and activities are running, they are still in a virtual format. But our Special Olympics actually had a virtual gingerbread house competition, which was very exciting with guest appearances by Dr. Green and Santa himself. So that was very fun for our kids. And then student government actually had two different events, the students weren't here today to talk about them, but they had two events, uh, this past month, and East was a big part of that. They actually did an esports tournament and one of our students actually finished in third place and earned a very considerable scholarship, so that was quite exciting. And then just last week, um, the, uh, students, the board actually had a trivia night, so hoping that, uh, we continue things like that, uh, as we move forward.
Thanks Carrie, on the discipline part of the report, as you could see that Mr. Bartley provided, the short amount of time that we were able to have in-person learning in November. We had tardy to school, no I D and dress code as the top three offenses. I wanna take a moment though to talk a little bit more about our dean's office and our guidance office. And the work that they have done as well as our special education department led by Dr. Huntington. To bring students into the building the last, uh, month of school, even with us going full remote. These were opportunities to connect with seniors as we had over thirty seniors a few weeks ago come in over the course of three days. Last week, we had, um. Approximately eighty sophomores and juniors who were brought into the building and there were two different times in the last month that we had freshmen brought into the building as well. These are students who are identified who needed some extra assistance and some extra motivation to be connected with their classes. I really wanna applaud again the dean's guidance office, special education department and our assistant principals, Dr. Jen Webre, Matt Bartley, Trish Sermon. For leading these efforts to connect with these kids. And, and when these students were able to come to school, not only were they just connecting and, and online with their classes, there were activities for them to do. They were meeting with their counselors one-on-one, they were meeting with their deans. They were getting their steps in for P E and it allowed some of us staff members to walk down to the fieldhouse and actually walk with them and actually talk with them and listen to them and hear how things are going. So I, I really wanna applaud the effort of our staff who have been involved with this. Um, and it really connects back to the Kids Matter survey that was mentioned a little bit earlier in the meeting tonight. In fact, I read an article today, um, from Education Week that cited a study that was just done in October. That researched, um, that surveyed, I should say, about eight hundred students between the ages of thirteen and eighteen. And they noted two things that they really were asking for to help them during this time. And that was more one-on-one time with teachers and more tutoring opportunities. And then if you look at the kids survey, uh, results that we talked about earlier that Dr. McBride brought up. And this, the amount of stress that our students are dealing with, we feel like these opportunities that we're. Giving kids to come into the building as well as that intervention and remote learning connection time that we have, no matter whether we're gonna be in person or remote learning. Can help our students with those stressors that we talked about earlier in the meeting. So I, I really feel very proud of the efforts that our staff has done through the first semester, we're very much looking forward. To the second semester to expand on these opportunities and get even better. And this is where also Carrie and I really just wanna thank you as a board of education for being so supportive of us. For your comments, for your suggestions and for your questions, because it certainly helps us be better as well. Before I hand it back over to Carrie for attendance, does any of the board have any questions on, um, any of what I just reported?
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, in your discipline, something about vaping, so they were actually vaping on campus, the students?
There was a particular incident where a student was, um, yeah, we had that with a student and was dealt with appropriately.
But I'm sure, I was just wondering, they were actually on campus doing this? And then I would like to know, is it, is it called knock and talk?
Yeah, I'm glad you actually brought that up, um, Ms. Johnson.
Do a lot of those still or is it slacking off or what's the trend?
No, we're, we're still doing the knock and talks, in fact, two weeks ago, um, I went on one myself with our new dean Travanna Green. And our east resource officer Dave Cullen, as we went to a house, um. Ms. Green had prepared a progress report for two students actually. And, um, not only did we give, um, those students a, a progress report, Ms. Green had made an arrangement for them to be bused to school, which was last week. For some additional connection time and we even delivered lunches as well, so the knock and talk initiative that's been led by our dean's office has been going great.
Okay, and then I would like to come in, I was on, uh, I think it was, I don't know if it was the parent group. Uh, you can correct me, uh, Dr. McBride, I go from one to the other. Where you had the young man Eric Pluckett, the dean assistant?
Oh, that was, um. Uh, Mr. Pluckett was on as a parent, um.
The young man, the dean assistant, the dean.
Yeah, it was Mr. Ethan Phillips.
Ethan.
Ethan Phillips, okay.
Yes.
And he talked about how he addressed the students, I wanna let the board members know about that. And then the things, uh, Carrie, that you guys are doing over at Central Campus when you do bring them in. I just think the board should know about it, that you're meeting them at the door, you know, saying good morning, uh, you guys don't talk about that, but you need to let the other board members know that you're doing these things. To try to help, you know, and then the young lady you just talked about, Travanna Green, how, what they do. When the kids come in in the morning time, so you need, you need to tell the board about that.
Yeah, I know, we're, we're very proud, yeah, we're very proud of what our, our staff and our deans and even our teaching staff, you know, some of the teachers have just come to the doors just to greet kids. And so yes, when they're in person, um, the doors are manned and, um, we are greeting kids, you know, greeting them to the point where we're, we know who comes in which door, we know their names. I even have one of the teachers who brings down a microphone that she took from one of her kids at home and plays music. So i- it's, it's a great way for the deans to engage kids, for our staff to engage kids, as they walk in the door, we wanna make that connection and make sure that they feel welcomed, so. And kudos really to, um, our A Ps and our deans, they really are putting forth the effort, their roles have really switched this year. You know, they're, they're the main, um, you know, main people who are really forcing connections, even when kids are, are not wanting to come. We're coming, you know, to their house to make them, make sure that they know that we are here and that we care, so. So, but thank you, Luanne, we appreciate that.
Put that out there because, you know, everybody see the deans and you guys as the bad guys, but you're trying to really. Deal with the kids in a friendly way, you know, so I just wanted to applaud you.
Oh, no, John and I say coming to the principal's office is a good thing, you know, the dean, the dean's office, you know, in years past has not been a great thing, but, um, we're changing that as well. We're changing the mindset that deans are here because they care and they wanna help our kids, so, but thank you, Luanne, I appreciate that. The last thing that John and I wanted to quickly talk about tonight is just the attendance, as you saw, um, we dropped below ninety-five percent. Normally we like to stay above ninety-five percent and you heard Dr. McBride talk about, um, already this evening, you know, November, uh, the aftermath. Of that Halloween weekend was pretty tough on us with our kids, on the amount of students that we had in quarantine, so we think that is a huge, uh, tribute to that. But as John and I kind of, um, conclude tonight, I just want to say thank you, um, for your support, we really do appreciate it. Uh, we encouraged our staff to disconnect over the break, to recharge, uh, and spend some quality family time, so we hope that all of you are able to do that. Uh, we appreciate everything that you have done and enabled us to do for our kids this semester, so happy holidays from John and I.
Thank you, Dr. Greenin and Dr. Green. Alright, are there any further questions for them? Okay, thank you and happy holidays to both of you too. Alright, next we have, um, let's see, it'll be our first semester student assistance and that's gonna be Dr. Cristofaro.
Yeah, just to preface what, um, Mrs. Cristofaro is gonna share, just to, you know, give you, uh, uh, picking up on what you just said, Luanne Johnson. Spending a few minutes really sharing the efforts of students and the efforts of staff. To in this very strange time, connect human beings for achievement. We learned so much, we had so much help and really, we learned so much that we think is going to last us into the next semester, at the beginning of the semester, especially. But also has really inspired us as we think about next year as well, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Cristofaro. You are muted, Mrs. Cristofaro, we can't hear you.
Lori, check your headset because you're unmuted.
How about now?
You are great.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to take a few minutes to highlight a few things I put in the report for you. And, um, you've heard about many of the things that we are doing. To intervene before a student is, when a student is struggling or we wanna intervene before they fail. So John has, um, really talked about some of the awesome things our deans and counselors have done. So I just wanna highlight a few, so I'm with my colleagues and I just wanna say thank you so much for approving our return to school plan, which did allow. Time for this intervention, which really means assistance and support time. And like I said, that just means we want to intervene with the student who is struggling. And, um, we wanna give them help with their academic skills and we wanna help them with their social emotional skills, Bob was talking about that with these. Social emotional competencies, competencies, especially things like, uh, self-management, you know, which deals with prioritization, setting little goals. During this time at home and, and John, I think, already really talked about the impact of the, um, Kids Matter survey. And what, how that supports the work that we were doing. I'm gonna talk a little bit about teachers and what teachers were doing during that time that we had in the afternoon, especially during the remote schedule. So teachers were regularly working with individual students or small groups of students on particular assignments or a skill. Or giving students the opportunity to demonstrate in a different way or a new way, more understanding or higher mastery. Um, I really think Bob already mentioned this, our proactive nature in scheduling this time really has helped to make our current D N F rates. Among the lowest in the region, um, and how do I know that? This is just not a formal sample, it's through conversations through John and Carrie have through their network, Bob has with, with his network. And so, um, just super proud that we were trying to be more proactive. I feel that you really know about the connection assistance time, John talked about that, where the very times this year when we brought students in. Who teachers identified, we looked at grades, but then teachers also reported out, like, these students aren't engaging, they might be turning their computers on. But there's nothing there and they were missing assignments, missing assessments, which are tests or projects. And so we did that several times and again, I would just highlight the work of the deans and the counselor to make that not a punitive experience. Right, kids came in and it felt more like a celebration, we're happy to have you here, I know East Campus in particular had some, you know, graduation kinda decorations. So that, um, you know, kids now know, they don't make long-term connections, but the actions they did at that time, on that day and that moment. Are gonna help them get to the finish line, so as John said, um, counselors and deans met with students one-on-one. They help students with self-management, prioritization, goal-setting, um, and even, you know, other things that students might be changing, facing that would create some barriers and. Um, I know that John, um, Bob, Angela, I went, we were walking with these students and just really hearing about these. You know, how these days were helping them. Don't get me wrong, sitting and doing schoolwork, which, which is something maybe many of them were avoiding, was, you know, did not bring overwhelming joy. But they were happy that the school was assisting them to focus and that's what we heard, it helped me to focus, to get my work done. And so they were appreciative of that for sure. Um, Angela hosted something similar for students with I E Ps and as you know, and we've said that, she worked tirelessly. To make sure our students in the modified program, the C C C program and the academy were in the building so they could get the supports they needed for their individualized programs. So just many thanks to all our teachers and in particular teachers in, um, that program and the peer professionals that helped bring those students in. One other, um, assistance program we put in place here at the tail end and you just approved their hiring. Here is we had some staff who worked particularly with our full remote students, as you know, their connection with teachers was, was less than the traditional for sure. And so they really did some work based on a check and connect model, which is like you would check in with an adult at the beginning of the day and check out, we can't do this in this model, so. These adults would connect with those students either via phone or a Google Meet. And they would help those students set a goal for the week, something that was attainable, that they could get done, and then the adult reached back out to them. And followed up with them at the end of that week and again, to set goals for the following week. So really a strong effort to get some students to finish, especially students who are in our full remote program. And we did provide that also for, for some seniors and we're still collecting some data that we can report out about the success for that program. But for sure, it helps some students get across the finish line. Again, John had already talked about the home visits by deans, counselors, administrators, so I felt like we had a multi-pronged attack here, like we're trying to. Like Carrie said, like if you're not coming, we wanna come and get you, whether that's by having an adult make a personal phone call to you and say, I'm gonna coach you on how to set goals. Or if it was somebody visiting your home. So we're already thinking about how can we grow our skillset in this area and again, being more proactive. Especially with self-management where some students, like Bob said, they just don't know how to get organized, they don't know how to stay on top of some things, so, um. Responsive scheduling is something Bob talked about earlier in our meeting and so we had some teachers already pilot this. So what this is, in our infinite campus portal that parents and students and teachers can see. During this time, teachers can schedule students in for that assistance period, right? And there'll be a couple of assistance periods every day, so if I scheduled John Greenin into my U S history assistance period. John will see it on his schedule, his parents can see it and I can see it, so I know if John is supposed to be there. Or if I was working with the teacher team and Dr. McBride was handling, uh, if we're teaching senior English and. Dr. McBride's gonna work with some students on constructing thesis statements and I was gonna work with some students on paragraph organization. I could take some of Dr. McBride's students through this program and schedule them in and he could take some of my students. So we're being more efficient with trying to help all students, so that's what responsive scheduling can do. It's gonna make it so, it's more transparent about who should be there, when they're gonna be there and help us to follow up then if students aren't showing up. In these assistant and support periods. I'm pausing there for a moment because that's, that's a lot to take in.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? I guess you were very informative.
Yeah, I would just thank you again for all your support and, and just for you, when you're out in the community, if you can tell people, sometimes this word intervention doesn't have the best connotation. And really what it means is helping kids get assistance and support in the areas that they need and, um, that's for all kids, right? You don't have to be getting a bad grade to need assistance and support to make sure you're achieving at the highest levels possible for you as an individual, so thank you.
No, thank, thank you, thank you to all of you. Okay, alright, next we're moving on to, uh, our maintenance report.
Alright, well, I'm, uh, as always, I look forward to each month getting a maintenance report from Mr. Bill Thompson and his staff, just a couple of, of areas. Ventilation and then really a few areas about in the time that we are in, taking advantage of how we can get ahead with our facilities. While we are, are in this time, uh, ventilation first, uh, throughout the pandemic, we have taken a very careful look at all of our protocols in terms of physical distancing. Checking students when they're here, um, self-certifying staff, masks, all those kinda things, but also. So many organizations from the Illinois Department of Public Health to, uh, Harvard School of Public Health have recommended a look at ventilation. And in this report, as board members saw, our oldest facility, Central Campus, uh, Bill Thompson and his staff took a very careful look. At, um, our ventilation and our C O two levels, which is what we use to test to see if ventilation is flowing through rooms. And, um, what Mr. Thompson, uh, talks about is in essence, finding some places where we need some replacement and starting. A process of replacement to enhance, uh, the ventilation, the thermostats, um, that we have at, uh, especially on the older units that we have. especially on the older units that we have at Central Campus. The idea, in essence, is to make some repairs that will really be built to last there. So very important as we, you know, are in this pandemic and want to make sure that that, you know, both at East and at Central, that everything that we're doing is bringing fresh air through our damper system in. Another piece that we've been looking, I think we've been very entrepreneurial. We're looking across campus to see what areas we can improve, especially to be ready in the fall, when we're so hopeful that we'll be returning with all of our students. One thing that we budgeted last year to take a look at was our library. In many ways, our MIS at the East Campus is half-finished. The large open area is completely refinished. It was remodeled a number of years ago. But as I had an opportunity to show some board members just by walking through, there are a number of unused spaces that range from an overhead projector graveyard to just rooms that are so small with so many mechanicals that they could be used by our staff and by our students, but they're not. I've shared with a number of board members that we started a process of working with DLA Architects to take a look at what would it take to update those facilities so that we could provide resources for students and for staff members, both for instruction using technology, because technology has taken just such a center stage. And I don't think, you know, we'll be turning the page back on that. But also, it could be a facility that assists our staff in terms of professional development in meeting spaces. So we will come back to the board in January with more specifics on developing that. We have an advantage right now in the pandemic that some of that work can be done if the board approves it second semester, where we are in such a better price to send that out for bid when you've got people who need that work and we're reinvesting in our community. But also, in the summer, as the board knows, when every school district is competing for contractors, those prices go way up. The key thing that we would hope is if we enter into that, the board approves that, that we have that finished for our staff and our students at the beginning of the school year. Also, maybe a pause for Quest Food Management. They've been great partners with us here in the pandemic. It's been very difficult for them. They are a contracted service, as you can imagine. We did come up with something that's been so important, and that is Stephanie Kroy, Bill Thompson, and Quest working to get us into the federal school lunch program, which, under these emergency circumstances, every student, regardless of income level, is eligible for a free lunch. Very important. At 2:30 today, I walked over to East Campus. We were distributing 14 days' worth of meals in large packets for families to pick up. And as of 2:30 today, Quest had prepared, and 4,186 meals, and that was at 2:30. We didn't end until 5:00, had been picked up by families. Food is a real issue, food scarcity here in the pandemic. So very proud of that. Quest is asking that if we extend their contract, that we look at a five-year extension with them. So let me maybe just open that for any kind of feedback. Not presenting the board with that contract extension, but we are considering approaching it from that point of view. They've been valuable, valuable partners. Any feedback from board members about Quest? And we'll be seeking that feedback from you in a proper venue and continuing on with them and extending with them, that process. Not so much the content of that, but any concern about that process.
When does the five-year contract end?
Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong. It's the end of this year, I believe.
Yes, I believe so.
And you're asking what, for another, if I'm reading, for another two- or three-year term? Or they're asking for a full five years?
Extending for another two to three years on to this current five-year contract. When it expires, adding on, and they'd like to begin that process, that discussion now, which would be a little earlier than we would engage with them, I think. Like so many businesses that have lost business, that assurance, you know, of knowing where they stand with us would be helpful for them.
The other reason, Dr. McBride, that we are bringing it up now is the alternative is a bid process, which would take Mr. Thompson some time. And then there's, you know, there's a whole drawn-out process of, you know, preparing bids and, you know, leaving the time to accept them, go through them, bring them to the board, all that stuff. So starting, deciding early whether we're going to look into extending the contract with Quest or needing to bid is why we're asking for input now. That's one of the reasons.
And certainly, we can work with Quest and bring back a proper proposal to the board. But I think probably what we would share is that it's been, you know, it's been a very effective relationship. You know, at a personal level, things like today where I really appreciate that they've been thoughtful about how we could provide meals to our students. That's just so important at this time.
Yeah, this is Lisa Bickus. I have no problem, you guys, extending the contract with Quest. You know the relationships and partners are very important, more so in this time. Anything, and Stephanie has enough to do. I don't think we need to go out to bid again.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Lisa, on that. I really feel that, you know, going through the whole, this is going to take more time if we go out on the bidding process and everything. And I feel we've got a good relationship with Quest, so we can just definitely stay with them. Okay?
I agree with, looking at extension, but I'd like to see different term options. You know, what's it for two, or three, four years out? Everything is changing daily. I don't want to get too tied into a five-year contract just yet, but...
Yeah, I think...
And just, yeah, just to be clear, we're, you know, you would, as a board, properly see what we would be looking at with them. So you are not, by any stretch of imagination, right now, authorizing a two- or three-year, how many-year extension? You know, we would bring that to you, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Ives, of seeing different options. Absolutely.
Right. So what I, what Mr. Thompson and I would plan for is to bring you options next month on renewing. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Great. And then the only final process, you know, again, I really appreciate what's happened with custodial maintenance. It's just finding a way to get things done. Our custodians have been turned into paint crews. And one thing that I would tell you, in large high school districts, it's very easy for a room, a space, to go 10 years, 15 years without a proper wall restoration and painting. It happens. And our custodians just all over East Campus, Central Campus, and now even they're finishing off at the district office, just putting some improvements up and getting the district office painted and just a new coat of paint. It's a world of difference. So that's something that's happening from Central to East to the district office now. That is the maintenance report.
Okay, well, thank you. Any more questions? Well, thank you again, Dr. McBride, and Stephanie, and also to Bill Thompson. Okay. All right, next, we're going into the employee sick bank.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk about the sick leave bank. A few times since I've been with the district, this has come up with staff. But I think during this time, during this crazy time, it really kind of took some precedence and it kind of came to the forefront. A group of teachers headed by Mary Westberg, Chelsea Waichardt, Karen Cooper, came to me and asked if they could, you know, do some research. We had some research. They went to a lot of school districts, looked at sick leave banks and how they operate, how they're governed, what the committee actually does. So what we did was, we took, you know, the best of all the sick leave banks from around the area and from around the state that we had found. Again, Chelsea and Mary did the bulk of this work, so they should definitely get most of the kudos for this. So what we did was, we put it together, talked about what a sick leave bank is, and pretty much, it's really no big cost to the district at all. It's pretty much employees donating their sick days to a bank so in case a fellow employee, a fellow teacher, fellow custodian, fellow secretary, fellow bus driver, fellow administrator is ill and doesn't have, you know, sick days banked up, that they would have a bank of days to kind of help them through the tough times, through an illness or through a family illness. It's not a district run, so it's not Tony-run, or it's not union-run, so it's not Karen Cooper necessarily run. But it's a committee of five people. And we have two teachers, two educational support personnel, and an administrator who have all volunteered to be the sick leave bank committee. And they will be making the decisions as people come in and say, hey, you know what? I need, you know, 15 more days to go and help, you know, my mother, or I need, you know, 15 days. I'm having a surgery. And it's only their second year in the district, or something along those lines. We put a limit on the number of days, so no more than 900 days for licensed staff, no more than 500 days in the bank for support staff. These are 100% voluntary. Employees don't have to pay into that. Some employees who maybe are getting close to retirement need those extra days for their TRS or their IMRF retirement. So it's something that's completely voluntary. And it's, if you were able to take a few minutes to read through it, a lot of it is outlined in the attachment I sent. And our plan is to roll this out come January, see what kind of interest we have, and then build it up over the course of the next year or so to help out the staff. So just kind of looking for your thumbs up for it and to try and help our employees. And that's about it. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Tony, it's Dick. I like the philosophy. What is going to be, you know, because it's going to be regulated by your five-person committee. It's not run by the administration or funded, you know, in any way. What if, you know, somebody asks for it, they say no, or they reduce it significantly? Is there an appeal process where they can say, well, look, I really want to be considered for this? Are all decisions defined by that committee? That's it, and full and final?
We talked long and hard about that, and the committee has the final say. So they can't come to me and say, Tony, hey, I want this these days, or go to Dr. McBride, or go to Karen Cooper, because this committee is governing it. So it's, and it was double-checked by our legal counsel, by Todd Hayden of Robin Schwartz, who went through it line by line with us. And I had said that how we have it set up is good to go.
And the membership of the committee will be public knowledge, who they are? As far, all the teachers are going to know who this five-person committee is. It's not this secret committee. It's going to be well-known who they are.
Right, right. And we're hoping, yeah, we're hoping to have something at one of the institute days or have it ready for them so that we can have a video explaining it, that here's your committee, these will be the people to contact if you need some assistance.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
So who selects the committee, Tom?
The committee. So, exactly. So the first time out, the four of us who sat on the committee, Karen, Chelsea, Mary, and I, reached out to those folks in the district we thought would be fair, impartial, representative, and understanding. So we reached out to those people, and then at that point, if someone steps down, then the committee will then reach out to another teacher, the established committee. Because the four of us are kind of taking a step back. I guess Chelsea's on the committee, so she's someone who's carrying over. But, yeah, we're kind of stepping back now, and it's all going to be in the hands of the sick leave bank committee.
And Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would imagine that the two teachers would come from, you know, the union making that suggestion, the two ESP would come from that bargaining unit, and then obviously, our one administrator, which would really default to you, but would be chosen by our, you know, administrative team, so the representatives to that, would each come from a representative group of people? The idea, the design is to represent all, both of our bargaining units and then the administration, correct?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, so we have two teachers to add support. So right now, we have two teachers, one at each building. Tim Russ is representing the ESP with the custodians, and so is Jennifer Cunane. And then Trish Sermon is our administrator on the committee. So Chelsea Waichardt, Ryan Visser, Tim Russ, Jen Cunane, and Trish Sermon. Those are our five right now.
And generally, just for board members, Mr. Ives asked a great question. What helps with these six banks, sick banks, is it's like a credit union you choose to become a member. So if there's anything in here, you know, an individual says, I, well, I don't want this committee of five making final decisions on my behalf, no one is compelled to join the sick bank. I think that's a key feature of our sick bank, that no one has to donate, you know, X amount of their days if they choose. Similarly, a typical question, Mr. Ives, is, I did not donate to the sick bank, but I now need to dip into the sick bank. Can I apply? You can't. So the voluntary nature of membership really helps in all of these cases. It's probably incumbent on us to make sure that everyone understands what this sick bank is and for people who join it to really read up on it and understand it. On behalf of the board, it's not anything that requires you to grant more sick days to each individual employee. You're not doing that at all. It's basically a deviation in how we manage our own sick days, by allowing folks to donate them.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Candari, and thank you, Dr. McBride, for that. Okay. Next, we have our capital project expenditure and interfund transfer summaries.
Okay, the interfund transfer summaries are the same reports we see every month. You guys should hopefully be used to them by now. It's just illustrating that we've got some A field Phase II projects that were spent, or expenditures that the board approved this month.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on. Okay, I just need a motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and enter into the minutes of the closed meeting under Chapter 5 ILCS 120/2C11 and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C1.
I'm in motion.
A motion by Mr. Lewandowski.
Second, Shaw.
And second by Dr. Shaw. Okay. So...
We're ready to go, Ann.
Okay, did we do a roll call, Kathy?
Uh, no, we, we have Travis motioned and Shaw seconded, so we're
Yes.
To take a roll call to go back into open session.
That's right.
Ready?
Ready.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes, sorry, I'm, I'm going in and out.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, any announcements to make?
Yes, I have an announcement.
Sure.
Dave, you're gonna love this, Sarah got into med school.
Outstanding.
Congratulations.
Great. Wait, Lisa, where's she going, Lisa?
Well, Florida right now, so, so, she's got one, two other interviews, Kansas and then Midwest, so I am ecstatic right now.
So she's gonna be a gator, possibly.
Way, way to end the year.
There you go. About time, about time something good happened this year.
Yes. Well, something good happened. You know, you as a board did a great job in a crazy year, who would have ever made this up?
I know, that's true.
The business announcements are, um, you know, just, and I'll get you an update on this. On January fourth and fifth, we have an institute day, I'd invite all the board members, we're gonna open up, um, at eight AM on Monday, June, uh, uh, June, January fourth, sorry, with, um, you know, I'll do some remarks, Kate Dean's gonna introduce herself to the staff, Mike Messina's gonna do the Maroon Apple Awards, which are pretty cool, kind of exciting, and then our, our students, after my remarks, we're gonna do this thing that I've done before called Hello My Name Is. You know, our Student Equity Action Committee presented to the staff in August, and they're going to present as well, students are gonna do small, almost like five to 10 minute TED talks, just about kind of their experience, um, it's something I did, um, when I was a principal, at both places I was principal, I just invented this exercise where, you know, if we go to a, a, a conference, you get that badge that says hello, my name is Luann, hello, my name is Lisa, and that's really all you get to identify a person, but it's about trying to go a little deeper, uh, than, than that, um, so that will be on the institute day, so I'll be sure to invite, uh, board members to that, and then you'll also be hearing a great deal that our Student Equity Action Committee is gonna be doing to, uh, celebrate, um, you know, Martin Luther King's, uh, birthday, and then obviously, African American History Month in, in February, so those are really some upcoming events on, on our docket.
All right, I also have another announcement too, as I believe one of our feeder schools, District 91, just got announced a new superintendent, Dr. Kathleen Wilkie, so.
Yeah, very, very good individual, um, well known in this area, uh, I believe she's at Mckenna, I hope I'm not wrong, uh, Dr. Wilkie.
I believe so, yes.
As an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, so, really a strong, that's a, that's a strong choice.
Yeah, um, I had Kathleen as a professor at St. Francis, and I can just tell you that it was one of my favorite classes that I took. Very engaging, she's a great person.
Well, that's good, good to know, I know that she probably, she did reach out as far as, uh, the news press release that they released out that she is willing to, she was going to reach out to all the feeder, uh, school superintendents, including our high school superintendent, Dr. McBride.
Done, yeah, we've already talked and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great, okay, well then, that is it, I'm just wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I then, that is, um, just need a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
I will do that.
Second.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yep, and a happy and a healthy new year.
Yes.
All right, all right.
Dr. McBride.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the gift.
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
Yes.
I hope you enjoy that, I'll, someday I'll give you the long story behind, uh, Barcock, Bar Kokawa, uh, chocolate, but I hope you enjoyed, it's good, it's, it has some good chocolate.
It did not last very long in the shop.
Okay, yeah. All of my gifts, I tried to, really, everything I bought this year for anybody was low cost, it's insane, good quality, so, thank you, of course.
Thank you very much.
I, I really appreciate you guys, uh, you know, I just really thank you for your service.
We appreciate you too.
And thank you, thank you Kathy for the goodies, though you're very good.
Thank you, Kathy.
And, and we have a motion to second, do we have to do a roll to end the meeting?
Voice vote.
It's just a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you for the flowers.
Everybody.